Call the Underhill Planning Commission January 5th meeting to order. I have one addition to the agenda, which is I know Val wanted to talk to everyone for a second, and I think Roy also had some info to share. There's no one from the public on. Does anyone else have any other additions to the agenda?
Oh, hey.
Um, okay. Well, maybe I'll turn the floor over to Val.
Unfortunately, we are going to be moving out of Underhill to Southern Vermont, so I can be near my family and take care of my mom. So when we sell our home and we move off, we step off the planning commission. I don't know when that will be. But, uh, yeah. Well, a couple more months with you guys.
She will be missed now. Congrats on moving.
Likewise. I'm glad I'm being here. And then I have the update from Vermont Council.
We'll do it right after the minutes. We'll do that first, if that's okay. And then ironically, Roy called me this morning and mentioned that he knew someone who might be interested in joining the planning commission.
I mentioned it to somebody who I thought would be a good candidate, that, you know, he moved here, him and his wife, and they have his own kids, which I think would be, he could have, you know, a family with kids on the board. And he lives on a mountain. And he's quiet and thoughtful. I thought he'd be in good condition, so he'll probably come to the next meeting.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
And then after.
What's his name?
Seagraves.
And then we'll sort of, even if he did like it and wanted to join, then we'd be down one person again after Val resigns.
It's a revolving door.
So we'll still.
Are we not at nine right now?
Eight.
Nine of us in the room.
Oh, so it would be.
If we could find a candidate, I'm still finding trouble finding the time.
Well, I know we have dabbled with it. Okay, so we're gonna put that ad out anyway. Maybe I'll retool it a little bit because I might have to change your word.
You're you. That could be. I noticed that on our, which we'll get to, the yearly recap, my name wasn't listed on there. So I wonder if the count was based on that, if it was missing.
Oh, it's funny, because I mentioned that you came back up above.
But it wasn't listed in the bottom, yeah. But we can get that later. I wonder if, just wonder if that's where the miscount came from. But if we have a viable candidate, I'm still, I'm still pretty busy.
Well, then we'll put the ad out. Well, we know we're losing Val unfortunately, so we should still put it out.
Still put it out.
Okay. That takes us to approve previous meeting minutes. I saw David sent a comment on, I can't remember, the first or fifteenth, but.
It's in December 1st, 2022. And it's following the second paragraph after 6:40.
And. Did you see that, Nick, or under?
I didn't, but I'm pulling the draft up, so we can change that right now.
There's just a small addition. Commissioner Edson explained that the UJFD has no regulatory authority and that requiring UJFD approval for driveway before issuance of town occupancy or certificate, which I think would not be proper.
Yes, I remember that.
Yeah, okay.
Did I get that? Yeah, where did you like get it added?
After the second paragraph, following 6:40.
Following 6:40.
After the two.
He sent the exact language around, if you want to copy it out of his email.
Yeah, yeah.
If anybody's, well, whatever.
Okay.
The latest.
Did anyone else have any comments?
I wasn't here. I'm not finding that, that.
It's still up to.
Isn't it? Oh, no. Well, it was the last note that I sent around.
Yeah, evidently, that's not in my inbox, or I'm just not certain, by the way, term. Either way, I can add that in right now.
I think he might have responded just to the form call email thing.
Yeah, right.
So I think it was the one that was written up here. You know.
Well, while Nick types that, does anyone, no one else has any comments? Can someone, does someone want to make a motion to approve the December 1st and 15th?
I'll make that motion.
Second, anyone? Tim, on favor? Hey, unanimous? And thank you for keeping up to date on the minutes, Nick. Certainly. Okay, that takes us to the yearly recap. Sandy was kind enough to send something, as you probably saw. I did them together. Oh, okay. I would really, if anyone else had suggestions for content, it's sort of very hard to remember what we talked about over the past year. So I sort of did introduction and the personnel changes as people come and go, which I will made a note to fix with tail on the bottom. But I would really like, are there two or three other things that we think we should include substance-wise as to what we worked on last year to beef up our description for the town report? I just kind of left a hole, because I figured we should talk about what we thought was important, that we wanted to include. So you sent one, Sandy, which was amazing about doing the housing and climate change.
Nick, did you get that on the screen, so we could look at it, while we're talking?
Yes. That's true.
In addition to those two new committees that Sandy mentioned, we could mention that we've just done it. Now, since we passed the town plan, we've done a deep dive into the bylaws and the highlights, the ones that we spent a lot of time working on, even though they're kind of minutia.
Especially the accessory dwelling units. We really spent a lot of.
We spent a lot of time on it, for sure.
ADUs, what else? Should we, we should, we could mention, we spent a little time.
Sure, to rentals, ADUs.
Yeah, canvas. I'm sorry, Val.
Traffic? Or what was that under? Row? Why did we have that driveway slash road permission discussion? That was a corner, corner lot? Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah.
Was that bylaw specific, or was that?
I think it was part of the regular bylaw review that's been kind of ongoing. Yeah.
Earlier, we spent a lot of time on, on streams and the regulations related to trail crossings.
Trail crossing streams, et cetera. Okay.
How much do we want every metro?
Well, I agree.
At least it's.
Before that, it was really in the.
To say that we were discussing trails.
You know what qualifies as streams and then some of those drawings that are.
Actually, in our, in section three, they're actually all the named streams. There's seven of them, I think. So they're actually in our mix.
So, I mean, so we've got bylaws, trail crossings. I mean, I think we've spent a lot of time talking about local options. Well, oh, it hurts me every time I hear the word, Roy. Um, no, you're right, that should be included. I feel like we spent a lot of time talking about just like energy and affordable housing in general, annually.
Waste water system.
Oh, wastewater, for sure. We need to include that. Wastewater.
Which you could certainly tie into the housing.
Okay, that's good enough. I just need to write one more paragraph, I think. Which I will do, and I'll send it around. If you have comments, please just email, because I'm supposed to have it to Brad by the minute, which is before our next meeting. So that's why I wanted to send around what I have. But I'll.
You're gonna send it around to us, and we can all read the whole thing, and then we can add it.
Yeah, and if you have any comments or whatever, just shoot them around in the group. And then obviously, everyone will see the final version again, and then I'll shoot it to Brad.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, I think we should, as I mentioned in the email, the terms of.
Do you know when people's terms expire on the planning commission?
Honestly, I don't.
Where did we?
I have no clue either.
I had zero. Last year, when there were issues with people not being reappointed appropriately, I think Brad made a master list, so I would check with Brad.
We could do a little bit.
That's in the annual, we can also, the annual report.
It is in the annual report. You automatically, I automatically got re-upped.
Could you ask Brad, if you mind? And I have, Brad sent the last time report around, so I'll see if I can find it.
Yeah, that, it's been updated recently enough that we could go back and look at that out. Yeah.
Anything else on what people want in the town report, that page, annual meeting town report thing about what we did? I mean, I don't frankly know how many people read it. Okay. I know. I also sent around, if you don't, oh, yes, sorry.
Is it too late to add something to the agenda?
No, of course not.
I'd like to add something about sidewalks at the very end.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Good. Okay, then I have an ad, but I sent around for commissioners. I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at it. I probably tried somewhat unsuccessfully to be funny, to get people to read it. I will tweak it to say that we have a commissioner who is unfortunately going to be leaving us. We're starting the process of trying to blah, blah, blah. So I'll tweak the wording to fix that. Okay, and then I will post it on a porch forum. Okay. Which takes us to. Val, with your, let's add your gen item in there.
So my homework assignment was to contact the Vermont Council on Rural Development, CCRD, based in Montpelier. They do a lot of work with communities. They wrote that Montgomery Rives report, which Nick shared with us when we were having the wastewater discussion. And you go to their website, you'll see the reports that they've worked on for probably over two dozen Vermont towns. And they, so the way they get to the content in the report is they do community sessions. So they come into a town at the town's request, and they spend about six months and do four workshops with the community stakeholders to identify the four major topics, four major issues that the town would like to address, that the community feels the town would like to address. In Westford's case, in Montgomery's case, one of those three or four issues was wastewater. And so they, their role is to facilitate the conversation, to put those workshops together, to bring technical assistance to the town, and to, they, they don't come with the idea, they don't necessarily say, the town plan has these priorities. They go to the community and say, what are your priorities? Now, if our town plan is in line with the community, then those same issues will surface. But whatever the top three or four are ranked, those are the three to four issues. They will work deeply with the town to address, and they will provide technical assistance. They will point you in the direction of, like, this is where you're most likely to have success, writing grants, receiving funding, et cetera. So they, if we wanted them to do that, they're not available till 2023, and the way to get on their calendar is like, to let them know tomorrow, sort of thing. The request doesn't come from us, it comes from the select board.
They're available in 2023.
For, sorry. Thank you. Has my mind, has it made that transition yet?
Who, who, where do you go to see this information?
The Vermont Council on Rural Development's website.
So they have, and it's not just, it's any, any issues that the town wants to address.
Yeah, if you go to their website, they, one, explain what these community visits are all about, and then they have on their resources page, the over 24 communities that they work with. They are fully funded to work with us. They receive money from the federal government, I think, through the Rural Development Office, to do this work for towns for free. Our commitment is just the select board up to request their assistance, and we have to agree to do a bunch of outreach for the first meeting to get as many community members to a location as possible, and to either pull the potluck or to have a catered event to really get as many people as possible. They usually do it at a school.
And then if I'm curious, I understand correctly, it's not like wastewater would, could be one of the things that comes up in this, but it could also not be. It's, it's a process to see what the community is interested in, and they sort of guide it along the way.
Yeah, and there's nothing stopping us as a planning commission to join, obviously, to be there at these community events. Be like, well, you know, we're really interested in X, Y, and Z, or a town plan, it's X, Y, Z, but it is supposed to be sort of a bottom-up approach. They are also happy to come and talk to us, or talk to us on the select board more about.
So we recommended to the select board that we think that would be a good idea, and the select board would have to vote on it, and then we could get on the list to be.
And then they make that up. Yeah. So they're all full for this year.
What do people think?
Think it's a good idea.
Yeah, it's sort of a, sort of a fishing, kind of an, to find out what the people in the town would like to see. I didn't quite get the direction.
So I, can I try to see if I got? So the concept is to see what possibilities are there for keeping density and repair in the village areas of the town to have common wastewater systems. Cut and brief, is that be correct? It depends on what the community asks for. So. I think, you know, a lot of what we've done in the town plan has been through our research and, you know, our history of the town and stuff. And we've done some surveys, but it doesn't address everybody, and it, it doesn't necessarily tell us what their priorities are, what they think the real issues are. And I think, you know, we didn't get great attendance at our public meetings, and I don't know how many people are aware of what's in the town plan. I think it would be an excellent opportunity to really motivate community members to participate in the town functioning. If they come to these prepaid dinners with workshops that are facilitated by somebody else and paid by someone else, and they, they hear what other people want, and they get sort of excited about possibilities, I think it could be really helpful to what we try to work on.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I left out two things. One, one of their goals at the end is to identify additional community leaders who could head up, for example, the housing subcommittee that we just couldn't find people for. So that's really one of their goals, is to drum up enough interest in the community that people are passionate about driving these initiatives forward. And then the other thought just escaped me. But I can read from you here, "Our community visit program is a way for towns to engage and bring together their residents, set common goals and directions in a neutral and facilitated structure, and access resources that will help them take action on those goals."
I think it's.
Right, so Westford identified wastewater, so that's why that involved that wastewater.
Yeah.
Well, Montgomery, too.
I have a question for Val. So do you, you get the sense that this is, we started talking about this because we were talking about wastewater in the flats?
Yeah.
This would be a townwide forum for townwide issues? Okay, got it, got it.
Not just wastewater.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be the wastewater economic development.
So it all goes.
So there wouldn't, would there be any way to tailor the process to focus on something sort of preset? Like, not necessarily a topic like wastewater, but maybe a geographic location to talk about, let's say, master plans for the villages, or something like that?
That's the opposite of the process, though, right? The process is from the people up.
I didn't.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. I didn't ask the question about geography. I asked the question about, can we choose the topics of the planning commission? The answer was no.
Okay. Okay, just curious. I like, that's what I like about it, is like, I know this isn't, this seems unlikely to happen, but, you know, we spent all this time on this stuff, and they could go through the whole process, and it turns out the number one concern in Underhill is a community center or something, like, something we've never thought, right? Like, it could be, it could be interesting to start from ground zero and see what people say, who might not have been engaged before. I mean, yeah, because attendance at the town plan meetings was, I think you were generous with your description. I think we got four wrong.
Yeah. I think there would have to be some kind of direction, you know, just get a roomful of people and say, well, what would you like to do? You know, and I don't know. Well, I'd have some sort of frameworks or something.
Well, imagine that's part of their process. Yeah, they just facilitate that meeting in such a way to get results out of it. I don't understand either how we would do that, but.
They would direct a meeting.
That's what I understand.
They're facilitating, yeah. And they do a lot of work, like, they'll invite the school principal. If our town had a mayor, they'd be sure the mayor got there. So they try to identify who's who in the town, and who has constituents, and bring those people in as well, in addition to the community at large. But they would meet with us, they would talk with the select board, I'm sure, and listen to, like, this is what we're working on, this is the town plan, but they do go into it as third-party facilitators. I mean, I think even if wastewater doesn't come up, there is bound to be other things that are in our town plan that we, as the PC, don't have the capacity to work on. And at the least, it could drum up other community volunteers who are going to go to get together and form that community center fundraising.
We have an incredible rec community. Incredible rec community.
And Val, you said that they would help work towards like grants and stuff after the priorities have been identified, or?
At the end of the reporting process, they provide a list of resources they think would be well-matched with that process and there, but they then also have a technical assistance bucket where they can help with the grant applications, identify them, not necessarily write it for us, but review it for us, help us with, yeah, move the applications forward.
Then you're sort of in their ecosystem, once you go through this process. Is anyone, well, let me think about this. Is this something we want to recommend now? Or do we want to circle back up on it? Does people want to look at it on their own over the next two weeks? And then see if everybody, you said that they would come in and talk to us? That's what they said?
They could. She also said that the timing is tight. Yeah, it sounds like they're already almost full for the following year, and they only take one, if any, community in Chittenden County, because we're so well-resourced.
So we can ask.
And, yeah.
Ask the select board to pass.
I'm saying we need to make a decision today.
Yeah, I wonder if we ask the select board, and if they want to invite them in to discuss with all of us.
Well, isn't that what we have to do? Doesn't the select board have to make the ask? That's what you said.
Yes, but I think you were saying, should we just go to the select board and say, we want to do this, or do we want to get them together?
Yeah, better, better said than.
I don't see any downside to pursuing it right now. At any point, we can say, we decided not to do it, right?
Do we try to get on the select board's meeting schedule for five minutes next week? And we can just say, like, listen, this is sort of time-sensitive, because 2023 is almost closed. This is what the process is. It sounds interesting. We don't see any downside. If you guys are interested, we don't want to miss the window.
I think we should do that, because you can't just kick the can down the road if we all, it all sounds like a good idea. Would, 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 nothing bad to come of it.
Yeah, there's no, there's nothing negative that could happen.
Just to be clear, the timeline is that they would need that select board sign off by when, in order to.
I don't know by when. There wasn't a specific date.
And until the next town beats us to it?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe if Val tells them, we're going to take it to our select board, though, I wonder if they'll kind of like soft-hold it, you know?
And then when would the process begin if we were approved?
Not till 2024.
Okay. So around this time, 2024, we might be starting to talk about an upcoming session. Okay. Okay.
You want to see if you can get five minutes from senior Holden?
Yeah, I think I can do that. Actually, really funny, you're talking about, it's almost exactly how I was going to bring my sidewalk thing, but not with CCRD.
My question is, can you, the select board meetings, obviously, the exact same time as our meeting. Are you coming to the next meeting? Would you be able to pop upstairs maybe for five minutes? So, no, I just didn't know if you were around in the next, for the next meeting. Yeah. Not permanently, Val, I just didn't know if you were attending the next one. Otherwise, someone needs to, someone, maybe someone else, whether it's me or someone else, can take like an extra, do a little extra homework in advance, so we can answer more questions.
Other question, just, so the premise of this, I work, is really to, to try to uncover the need for the, for the septic that we're talking about, so is the hope that we get more information on that, or is that more open to other topics?
I think what brought us to this process is like, we were like, how do we approach this wastewater issue? We were sort of kicking the can down the road about a wastewater committee, and then Nick brought in the Montgomery Rives report.
Right.
So if you're doing, if you're going this route, then you're really kicking the can down the road at least a year and a half or more, because you're going to have to wait till you have the feedback, and then decide how to approach it. So it's going to be, you know, a year and a half or two years before you take action on it again.
So if you come up with something, we can cancel that meeting.
Right. To me, there, I think your points were well-made, Tim. My point is, I, I, I think that you almost run them in parallel. It's hard to believe housing doesn't come out of this as a topic, rightly, that's super hard to believe, which means wastewater would then be wrapped up in it. However, just because that's going, and we get on their 23 calendar, whatever, I don't think it means we don't also decide what we want to do in wastewater at the same time, because that process is so long on wastewater anyway, right? Like.
So, but this.
I don't think we should just, we should not, I agree with you, bro.
Contrary to what I said in the very beginning, when Val clarified or Sandy clarified, it sounds like it could be more than that. Like, the meetings could be more about discovering what the town feels they need.
Yeah, and they might not.
And it might not be wastewater. It could be that community center thing. So I think it, yeah, there's things we have to address, but.
Because I think the governor, just in his speech today, addressed wastewater.
He did?
Yep.
What did he give you?
I just caught it on the drive here, just like, we need to, in order to support thriving communities, we need to invest in septic and wastewater.
I heard something else on the radio from Laura Sibilia, maybe? She's head of like the rural caucus in the State House, and she was talking about supports, exactly like this group does, like supporting small towns for these grant processes, get through the stuff they need to do, and I'm wondering if she might be pushing to get more funding for this organization or things like that, so there might be more resources all around yet to come.
Well, and I know Nick's still working on touching base with that guy who came up in the video presentation I attended.
Yes. I can't remember his name now, but we know it. Let's tack on a wastewater element to my sidewalk update, because they're somewhat related, and you'll see why. And we can circle back.
Well, then why don't we segue to, since I think we know what we're doing here, which is we're trying to get on this, we're going to ask Brad to get on the select board.
Yeah, which I will do.
Because that will be around.
And did that answer your question fully, like?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, working parallel, and it might be that this process yields totally, three totally different priorities unrelated to wastewater.
We can still do wastewater on our own, and then do the other town priorities that we've identified separately.
Yeah. Which maybe takes us to sidewalks and wastewater.
Sure, yeah, we can just jump into that, actually, really, and just make a note here, the, on my timesheet. So I went to the, this is a fresh item, I went to the CCRPC offices this morning in Menusky with their invitation. I ran into Taylor Newton, who's one of their planners at a Vermont Planners Association, like, happy hour a few weeks ago, and he said, you should come on by, after I told him about what the PC had been up to. After I told him about what the PC had been up to. Um, he's like, we would love to talk to you about these things. We might have some resources to give you. So. Uh, at their invite, I was there talking to him and Brian Davis, I believe is his name, um, who's also a planner at CCRPC. And I updated them on, uh, let's start with wastewater just because it's a little bit quicker and it's germane to what we've been talking about. Basically, they said. Time is now to do wastewater. They said, there's never been more uh, available federal funding and. Um, you can get your preliminary engineering report paid for, bought and paid for or um, by the Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund. And if you recall, the preliminary engineering report is the first and arguably most important step. In building out a shared wastewater system in a municipality. Um, really, nothing else can go beyond it. Uh, can happen without it, but it also. Answers a lot of the questions and addresses a lot of the concerns that seem to have come up during this process and are just sort of out there in the ether like, how much does it cost? Where would these things go? How many people would this benefit? How many houses would this benefit? What would be the capacity? Um, a P, a, a PER that would, that is workable and. It is useful enough to act on will answer all those, all of those questions and there'll be plenty of time for input along the way. And those documents can be, um, this, the process is somewhat Byzantine for how to actually begin working on a town. Our town to commission one, start working on it, but essentially it's um. Something that we could start at pretty much any point with just select board sign off and um, and would not cost the town any money if we kind of. Uh, get our act together and um, and, and stay on top of it and, and, and see the process through, at least the, the PER process.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, that's, that's really all that I had to update on.
Since we're getting on the select words agenda already.
Yeah.
Hopefully. The question is. Um. I mean, this is premature, but I mean, that's sort of what everyone's been telling us, right? Like now is the time to do it. So the question is. What is involved? What's our ask of the select board to begin the process of? The preliminary engineering report in terms of like, what are the literal mechanics of getting this thing paid for?
Uh huh.
Because it, I mean, everyone wants to pursue this. We've been talking about it for a long time. If it's free. Um. How do we, like, what, what did they say what the literal to-dos are that we could take to the select board to say like, here's how we get our free preliminary engineering report?
For he answers that.
Yes.
What if we set up a meeting with a select board after meeting and bring Taylor and try to have Taylor explain it to them? Like, we would like to do this. Taylor, can you explain it to them?
Not that idea. We can't. Yeah, yeah.
You'd have to coordinate with him and find a time that he can work. I'm sure that someone in their office would be willing to do that.
Yeah.
That's a. We should do.
Yeah, and unlike the sidewalks item or Val's item, uh, that, that is quite as time sensitive. So we could ta- take a few months to get everyone prepped and.
And if it's truly not going to cost anything for the report with all the grants, then what are we waiting for? We should do it.
Well, so on that note, is there any way Taylor could come to our next meeting for thirty minutes and fill all of us and educate us on the details of that process? And then we could hit him up.
Ready?
To come to the slideboard?
I could certainly ask.
Yeah, he can just zoom in.
Yeah, I mean, they, uh, we were the only people in the office. They're already working remotely. So yeah. Um, I'm sure that, I'm sure that if not Taylor, then someone from RPC would be, would be willing to come in and talk about this.
Is everyone interested in doing that?
Yeah. This is not. A loan. It is.
It is, it is technically a loan.
Forgivable loan if it's the same thing.
It can be forgiven, yeah.
Among the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and still mentioning loans and nothing.
Hmm, hmm, yeah.
So I will say the same, the person who's on the planning thing, when I sent around that thing, said the exact same thing. It was like, you got a one hundred percent forgivable. Uh, that is exactly how that was.
Yeah, and there are, like I said, there are some, some sort of details and hidden trip-ups uh, within that process of getting it and, and whatnot, but essentially what Taylor said was. A surprising amount of people, of towns and cities have actually gone through this. And then what happens is usually PC members move on and then. Uh, and then the momentum dies and it got the report, but it languishes. So. He says, so basically, but evidently it's easy enough and simple enough to commission and, and obtain. That it's, yeah, that, that, that like a number of people where towns and cities have done that. So maybe our turn next. So yes, I can send an email to Taylor asking him to uh, please give a little uh. Pitch to the select board, summary to select board about what um, the options would be for obtaining.
Did you want him to come to us first?
I think so, unless anyone thinks the process should be great to get him for twenty minutes, thirty minutes on Zoom.
At the next.
Yeah.
Meeting at maybe seven.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we should be.
Then we know what he's gonna say.
Yeah, we should be a little more educated on the process.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay, so that.
We can always invite the select board to go to the. To our meeting on Zoom also, if he's gonna be there.
Well, I think I'm just a little worried about um, putting in front of the select board before, like, we really know the details.
Yeah.
Okay. So the two things we had so far, both are rich on Nick's plate, and then let's not forget your sidewalks is getting. Taylor or someone from CCRPC and, and getting time with the select board for.
Val's.
Uh, for Val's thing next meeting.
Uh huh.
Okay, and sidewalks?
And the sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, so the sidewalks thing is that, that's basically, just to bring you all up to speed on uh, things, I. I think we were, we talked about this a few months ago when it happened, but the Recreation, Recreation Committee pitched a side, an Underhill Center sidewalk idea to the. Select board. And when I say pitched, what they did is they gave a presentation arguing in favor of some kind of sidewalk facility. Um, more enhanced pedestrian facility along River Road and Pioneer Valley Road. And I requested that select board allocate enough money to um. To uh, commission what's called a uh. Uh, a scoping study from, and they would do that in partnership with, again, CCRPC. Now, this is, we've already, thi- this sort of study has already been done for Irish Settlement Road and Pioneer Valley Roads.
What is Pioneer Valley?
Oh, sorry, Pleasant Valley. I, I live in Pleasant, Massachusetts.
Okay.
I cannot shake that from my head yet. Everything's Pioneer Valley down in like Greenfield and North Hampton. Thank you. Uh, yeah, Pleasant Valley. So Irish Settlement and Pleasant Valley have already been studied by CCRPCs. Um, yeah, folks, but it's all about bicycle access and, and bike, you know, bike, bike safety, basically. Um. All vehicular stuff and not as much attention was paid to uh, pedestrians. And that's also more talking about the rural farther flung sections, not the village section that. The REC committee was more interested in. Uh, River Road has also been studied uh, for expansion, like milling and repaving. Again, RPC did uh, partnered with BHB on, on doing that study. So my point is, these studies are. You know, we, we've got a number of them. We've done a number of them in the past. And so the, the REC committee's ask to the select board was, let's do another one and let's focus it on the. On this section of road between roughly the Underhill Center School and the, the Village Center, the General Store. And uh, we would like to study options for how to construct sidewalks along there and, and traffic calm, et cetera. One of the, you know, the point of these studies is to come out with enough information that you could, we could then start an R, an RFP process, find a. Um, and also, you know, uh, start applying for loans and grants to fund the eventual product. The studies typically cost about forty to sixty thousand dollars. And RPC asks for a twenty percent match of that money and then they supply the rest. So essentially, we're talking about somewhere between, you know. Five and sixteen thousand dollars of town money spent on commissioning a study that would end in a, that would end. At a point where the town could then choose to, if they like, you could choose an option out of the, the several that would be considered. And then put out an RFP for um, a consultant who, who would come in and actually build that, as well as. We being in the position to um, you know, make grant applications and loan applications to help fund the process, the project from there. Um, because the sidewalk is only to be built. So that presentation was made, the select board was interested. Brad um. Got thinking about it in the days afterwards and came up with kind of a counter offer where he noted correctly that. A law of Underhill Center is publicly owned land. He sketched a route that would, that he believes we'd, we'd be able to. Build without having to go through the scoping study process. We could just build with ARPA money, for instance. Or any amount of money that would cover that, whatever the cost would be. And we could do it without buying right of way or doing any kind of potential, you know. Engineering projects to cope across the bridges. Brad was a little bit concerned about. The uh, right of ways across the bridges and whether or not it would be enough to, it would be wide enough to get a sidewalk and lanes and stuff like that. So the REC committee, I'm almost done with the summary here. Uh, the REC committee has decided to, evidently they've decided not to keep pushing for their original ask and they've. Sort of adopted Brad's, Brad's proposal and they've. Turned that into an ARPA committee application for money. They're asking, I can't remember how much money they're asking for.
That's where, where the.
Yeah, the ARPA Advisory Committee. So they've approached the ARPA Advisory Committee. I believe Anton Kelsey of the REC committee has. Uh, put his name on an application. It's basically the same presentation as what they gave to the select board, but um, uses Brad's actual map route as the. That, you know, as the route and there, I can't remember how much they're asking for, but it's probably, I think it's several hundred thousand dollars to just actually, you know, buy the supplies, find a contractor and have it installed. So.
That's his whole thing. People have got to come in with their, not just ideas, but. They have to come in with the amount of money it's gonna cost, how it'll be approached, how it'll get done. I'm like, really? The average citizen's not gonna have that information?
Yeah, I, I think it's still pretty speculative how much money they're asking for, but it's basically a bunch, however much it costs to, to build a sidewalk.
And it would go from where to where?
Uh, the basic route would be from Underhill Center School down to the um, west edge of Moore Park and then also with a small spur to the access to Town uh, Pond and Rec Fields. Yep.
Oh, so it doesn't go all the way through the center?
It does not. It does not.
Seems kind of half-assed to be.
And that reflects Brad's concern about the uh, about the right of way with.
All the bridges, so when they, those all bridges. I walk this all the time, so I'm pretty passionate about it and I think we need a real sidewalk there.
So.
That bridge needs to be replaced, like there's so many other, like, I know Brad's concerned, but. That bridge should be tied into a sidewalk project and just be replaced.
So.
Barely fit two, you can't fit two cars of a bridge if a truck's going across it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And speaking of trucks, we have a lot of trucks going through. Et cetera, one, in fact, I don't think any of them stop at any of these stop signs. Um. So. Sharing some of Kale's concerns that he just voiced, I, you know, wanted to, to talk to RPC folks about. About the um. Sidewalk anyways, I wanted to get their take on, on Brad's plan and, and you know, how the, how the thing had, had um, this process had evolved. And they said, we strongly recommend you continue with the scoping study process.
I, I think bailing on the scoping study is a huge mistake.
Yeah.
Find out what the possibilities are.
So they, and next.
ARPA money for the match, so it's still free.
So, yeah.
Then you have, then you have possibility instead of this one thing that Brad came up with on the, on the whim.
And the, you know, and this is. None of this is to, is to um, denigrate Brad's plan, which I think is actually excellent, you know? I love the attitude of use what you got, when you got it, to do what you can.
Yeah.
That being said, um, you know, a sidewalk is not, well, A, a sidewalk is not necessarily. You know. Comprehensive pedestrian infrastructure and I would argue that there's room for more of that beyond just the sidewalk here. The other thing is that, as you say, Kale, it, it ignores the sort of, it, it, it doesn't consider the, the broader possibilities or. Requirements uh, that might happen in the future, for instance, replacing a bridge.
As a pedestrian that walks the stretch almost daily, I think that bridge is. The spot that needs the sidewalk the most at the whole stretch.
Hmm.
That's the one spot that I'm afraid with my kids, myself.
Hmm, and you're talking about the one, the one just past Bear Town? Yeah.
Right there, a lot of Bear Town.
Yeah, yeah.
Someone's gonna get hurt on that bridge eventually. I'm surprised it hasn't happened, but.
I have nearly been hit about to cross or just after I've been crossing it, but um, so anyway, uh. So there's, you know, there's arguments both ways, basically is what I'm saying. Um, you know, on one hand, we have a more, potentially a more immediate one. Uh, that could be done for cheaper. On the other hand, we have a longer one that might be able to yield broader results. And when I say that, what I mean is. I've. A scoping study is a requirement for a lot of potential funding for infrastructure. So, so you know.
What exactly are you saying scoping study? What is that?
What the scoping study would be, would be, uh, the RPC would be the project managers for it, but they would essentially work with um, environmental consultants and surveyors. But from, for instance, like BHB, just throw out a name to do, to look at the. Uh, to take the concept, put a sidewalk in Underhill Center somewhere and then.
Run possibilities.
Yeah, exactly, run the possibilities. And it generates potential routes, potential budgets. It studies the do-nothing option, which is. What we're currently living through and uh, and then compares all of these possibilities against that do-nothing option generates budgets and routes for all of those.
So the scoping project would um, be a broader uh, study that would.
It would be broader.
Would allow for um, a bridge to be included.
That's exactly right.
But just with Brad's, it would not include.
It would not. On, on the other hand, Brad's offers the potential of maybe being a actionable. Faster than anything generated by a scoping study because the scoping study would. Would start later this year at the soonest, run for another, you know, six months to a year. And then would be available to be actionable, at which point we have to go through other processes like that, RFP.
Five years probably.
Et cetera. So it, it extends the process somewhat, but. It would generate very useful information such as, do we need to replace this bridge or is there a potential route around it? Um, how would uh? A sidewalk here connect to a potential multi-use path or widened River Road? Um, maybe what about, wh- whether or not a sidewalk or a multi-use path should go up to Casey's Hill? These are all things that we've talked, that people have talked about, but haven't really been considered. Held up, you know, and considered next to one another, literally. And this is what the scoping study would give us the opportunity to do, as well as giving us the required. Info data um, that we would need in order to apply for a lot of the grants and loans that would potentially.
Construction grants.
Yeah, it would do this. And it would also consider not just, you know, sidewalks, but also other street enhancements, for instance, you know. Uh, just changing the street design to make it safer for pedestrians, cyclists, people driving, stuff that wouldn't, that simply putting in a sidewalk would largely ignore.
Did I see your hand go?
Yeah, I was just curious what our goal is.
So I'm bringing this before you because I basically wanted to get your, uh, you're the planning commission and I wanted to get your opinion on public works planning here in Underhill. The options we have. Are to um. You know, the, the REC committee is elected to, to pursue Brad's plan. Um. But, you know, I'm personally of the opinion that I think we should continue to, to pursue a scoping study through um, RPC. RPC has made it pretty clear to me that we would be a competitive. Um. Uh, this would be a competitive application that they would like to, to work on it, but uh, the application period for their. Um. For their work plan for the coming year, fiscal year ends. The day after next select board's meeting, so fifteen days from now. Um.
But what would they need by then?
They would need, so they would need a select board approval for, to do this and a commitment to spend whatever money would, you, we would need to spend on a match.
Before the next slideboard meeting?
Or as a result of the next board, select, select board meeting.
The match would be, the match would be one tenth of what there, it sounds like they're asking for to build the sidewalk.
I think, yeah, twen- twenty percent, uh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Not that now Anton's asking a hundred and something to build this without any other grant money.
That is true.
With the scoping study, we could use ten grand or so of ARPA money to get the grants to the scoping study.
It would probably be more.
Then open up further grants for constructions. We would have to spend less of the ARPA money, so we could spend ARPA money elsewhere on other things.
So one way or the other, the scoping study is not the actual design, it's just to see what the feasibility is.
And where the routes would be, what the costs would be.
It's somewhere between blueprints and um, uh, conceptual number, basically.
But if, you know, with Brad's idea, there would, there would still be quite a bit of design work that needs to be done.
There was.
It seems like to me the scoping study would be a, a wiser approach because it would take into consideration. Like the whole village and like you said, tying it into future, uh, you know, the long range view of what, what the center would look like. So I would, I would prefer to see the scoping sense study done myself, I think.
I mean, okay. The, the one thing I think, and I don't know how we. Do this the most wise way. But it seems to me that at least the ARPA committee should know. That these are the choices when it comes to a sidewalk, because I know, because they reached out to me before the select board meeting, you referred to, referring to and I intended it virtually. Like the reality is. Like the reality is that movement behind that particular sidewalk plan is, has a lot of voice, right? So I just think if I was on the ARPA committee and I don't know the right way to do this, they should know that the other option to do the sidewalks, to do the scoping study and to do that, I would want to know that if I was on the ARPA committee, so I don't know what the right way to handle that is.
Yeah, that goes back to my question, like what's our role? It seems a little sensitive, like this is the REC committee, we're like, are we the planning commission? Like, do we have any say over whether or not their proposal should move forward that, but it seems like everyone here is in agreement that doing the scoping route makes more sense. I, I keep thinking back to the town plan and taking a comprehensive approach and.
I think that might be a recommendation in our town plan.
Chying the sidewalk into the bridge infrastructure, the road, and like I think you said, it's, it's only part way. And if we even took it through the village, where there's more houses, we're increasing vehicle miles travel.
So I think the REC committee is trying to get from the school to the
To the pond, yeah.
Safely.
Well, we will know, the, the initial. The initial talk, because I, being on the stretch, I got the initial letters, was their, their initial thing that they sent out letters to everyone on the path for that they then presented to the select board for their meeting was to go from Sand Hill to Iriselman with a spur to the pond. Well, and then they're across all three bridges.
In their defense.
I think that last stretch after Cedric's store is probably unlikely, but their initial idea was Sand Hill.
Yeah.
On River Road, on River Road from Sand Hill all the way to the school.
Yeah.
That there's six hundred grand sitting there right now.
If you can get a piece. Yeah.
There would be a little.
The town right away, and, and there's thirty feet or so on either side.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well Nick, what's your advice on, the planning commission, the town plan, so this seems to dictate a longer term, more methodical approach.
Yeah.
On the other hand, there's cash sitting there right now and people justifiably, if they can get their hands on it to get something halfway there, they're going to go for it.
Yeah.
What's, and there's sensitivities here, like what's the.
Yeah, like we don't want to deflate their enthusiasm, like if they're, sound like too originally what they were, but that's right, the, the proposal for a scoping.
My understanding is that the reason that they chose to take up Brad's opportunity is simply because it offered the opportunity to move on something quicker.
It's a one-time-only opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, but.
They're missing the point of the scoping study though.
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
Very important part of the planning.
Yeah, I kind of think they just want to put a W on board, I, to be quite honest, I understand that. And I think, you know, and, and I'm, I see that as well, but just speaking as the planner, I am more in favor, I, I'm more in favor of seeing a comprehensive plan developed for something. If, it would be one thing if, if it was an enhanced sidewalk or like an extra bike lane and we already had basic pedestrian facilities, but we don't have anything, so we're starting from scratch, which gives us an amazing opportunity. But it also means that we have, I think, a certain amount of responsibility to be a little bit more, like, take a slightly longer view and be a little bit more circumspect.
But what's the to do, what's the to do?
So I guess what I'm, what I was asked, what I came to ask was solicit advice, and I also think that I wanted to just put this in front of you folks because I think that the planning commission has a role in reviewing these kinds of infrastructure and town plan stuff. Um, and I guess also, I guess my, my, I need to talk to Brad about this, this is still new information, I don't want to um, I don't want to be transparent and tell him, you know, how, how I feel about this and um, I, I guess what I'm asking is if I were to write up an application to get on CCRPC's work list and get one of, and commission one of these scoping studies, would the planning commission um, support me if I were to present that to the select board?
Yes, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, but I think we need to be, yes, but I, I'll put an asterisk. I think we need to manage upfront, like now, the fact that we're going to do that versus, versus going, we don't want to be perceived as going behind the REC committees.
Exactly, which is why I wanted to bring it, bring it forward here. And I will be talking to Brad about, I just haven't had an opportunity to, I will be talking.
Fairly close with Anton too, I could talk to Anton, if we wanted, let's go directly to the REC committee.
Let's see, guys, if I were you, by the way, this includes this. I mean, it feels like the ARPA committee, they asked our opinion upfront about our survey. But it seems like if they're looking at things like this, that at some point they should circle back with the planning commission to see how all their projects fit in with the town plan that everyone spent years working.
That's why I brought this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good.
I think that's, if you position it that way to the ARPA committee or to Brad or to Jen or whoever, um, that sort of sweeps the sidewalk thing.
Yeah. Um, Jen, such is my data, let's go.
About this, the ARPA funds, could they earmark money for the sidewalk, this sidewalk project from the ARPA funds if they, you know, if, say like three hundred thousand dollars from the ARPA funds for that, but they have to be used up by a certain date, so that would mean that this whole uh, study needed to be done and then they had to have a plan to build it, uh, to spend the money for twenty twenty-five, is that correct?
I think there's been some weird money finagling and a lot of those restrictions, like the timeframe, I think are gone.
We'd have to ask Jen, I think.
I think it's all general fund now.
Uh, so that money wait.
But they're considering it ARPA funds because it's not tax dollars and they're trying to be careful about how they use it, but I think a lot of the restrictions have been eliminated.
So maybe if the REC committee knew that some of those ARPA funds were earmarked for this sidewalk project, that they would be content with through a longer process of getting.
Mm-hmm.
And make their act permitting and all that.
And have their ask be for uh, match money for the scoping study and then eventual build out money. Yeah, sort of a reserve fund to build to eventually.
Match money for the future grants to build out.
Yeah, but you get as many grants as you can and then hopefully you don't even use as much money as allocated and then make them.
Like you said, it would be matched for a future.
The catch is that the select board isn't making decisions about the ARPA money.
They have.
They're waiting, they're waiting for the recommendations from that committee.
Yeah.
So if you went to them at their next meeting and said, can I have approval to do this? They're going to say, well, you know, we don't have those funds yet.
They may, they, they have also spent a decent amount of the available ARPA money on stuff that they determined was already um, was, was important enough and already worthwhile, so.
I think it's weird going to the select board without uh, resolving this. I don't know if resolving is the right word, but dealing with this issue with the ARPA committee is pretty, it's pretty aggressive.
Except for the tight timeline.
That's the only reason I wa- I'm interested in moving on this now is because of the tight timeline, otherwise we'd have to wait another year before RPC could uh, could work with us on scoping.
What if you talked to Brad about that, like that exact issue? What you just said right there, like the timing, and say like,
You could just say.
What do you want to be?
Yeah, yeah. I could talk to him about it certainly, I mean, I was certain, I was already going to talk to him and let him know that I spoke with RPC and they really recommend that we don't go with this plan.
I mean, then you could circle back, I'm like, I don't, I'm understanding all the details of the meeting, as long as it legal then for you to then send an email to everyone here summarizing your conversation with Brad or does that violate the meaning?
That's a good question, I don't know.
I think you could send it, along with like materials to be discussed at the next meeting, we just couldn't talk about it.
Right. I could certainly report and then we could make a meeting, a, a packet that includes any emails that I sent, so it's on the record.
I think it's a fair statement, correct me if anyone disagrees with this characterization, that we understand where you're going. We share your vision that we'd like to sort of go along with the town plan. Um, we also don't want to, uh, we're no way diminishing all the work the REC committee's done, we'd just like to, you know, see what the most strategic thing to do here is, and if that's to do a scoping study to accomplish the longer term version of the town plan, then we'd always like to, for you to touch base with Brad on that and see if we can't get to where the REC committee wants to go. And also somehow abide by the bigger vision that the town plan offers.
And it's like to be most efficient with the town's limited funds, instead of spending whatever hundreds, thousands, REC committee is asking for. We're just going to be asking for match for the scoping study, to ten, I think you said five to ten.
Probably more in this case, like uh, fifteen or sixteen, because when we were talking about the scoping study, um, I suggested, you know, um, and feel free to actually be down on this, but I was saying if we're going to do a scoping study and commit to that amount of money to study transportation in here, we should probably talk about like the complete streets filled out for this that includes sidewalks, but also, you know, at least like visual signage and facilities for biking, because it's very popular with cyclists. And just take into, like a scoping study for instance, would also let us talk about, you know, how to tie in like Moore Park with the street itself and, and the, and the town hall and, and stuff like that, so. When I was talking with the RPC folks, they seemed excited about the, uh, expanding a, having a scoping study be centered around a sidewalk and pedestrianization of the village, but sort of include just sort of the village as a walkable area and consider all the various places you could walk to in the village and where people are already walking, as Kale has demonstrated to us. Um, so it would be a little, a little bit more expensive than a very narrowly limited, like one like on River Road where it's like, let's study this two point eight section, mile section of of road with two intersections on it. This would be a little more complicated, would probably raise the price for, on the overall price tag to like eighty thousand is what they were ballparking the best. And that would be a, a sixteen thousand dollar match from us at twenty percent.
Well, why don't we touch base with Brad on that, circle back to us, and I also, unless anyone proposes this, I feel like the other thing you should mention to Brad or Jen or whoever that person is, is we'd love when the ARPA, when it's appropriate for the ARPA committee, I mean, I, I would think they might like getting a check too on where their projects are thinking of going with, fit into the larger town plan, unless they can, unless they're thinking they're getting it on their own, which is up to them.
If they're even considering the town plan.
Or it should be.
They should be, yeah.
So we can go to the, is there a link to it with the ARPA committee is accomplishing right now on the town website, so we can read their minutes, I haven't even.
They, they have to change.
Yeah.
Yeah, the select meetings must be up there somewhere.
They are.
They're open meetings, so.
And I'll, I'll also remind uh, everyone that we and ARPA and all the other committees, um, you know, are reported and, and, and enshrined up on the, and then the, the.
MNC TV.
MNC TV, thank you, in the Pioneer Valley. Um, and uh, so you can go and watch these meetings anytime, that's how I write my, no, my minutes. Um, so those are up, and um, if you want to, and I actually have been watching some of the ARPA, the ARPA um, committee, uh, committee meetings myself. Comedians.
Pleasant this valley, pleasant. So pleasant, the views are beautiful.
It's almost like Luisa's real estate around here. I think it's amazingly pleasant. Okay, so do you have what you need there?
I think I do, thank you, yeah, I'll be talking to Brad and circling back by.
No, thanks for bringing that up, um. Man, this is like the Nick, the Nick show tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
If you don't mind, I mean, the next two things are you, do you have like, since we're way, officially way behind, I think the local option tax update is that you're waiting to circle.
I'm still, I'm still waiting, I've, I've got calls out to the tax department, you'll be shocked to know that it's hard to find someone at the tax department to call you back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I found the secret is to just keep annoying them.
That may be placing a call later tonight with, for, to get a voicemail. Um, so that's the update and I will, I will provide anything further from that as soon as possible. And as far as the next.
The next one is all you two, right?
Yeah, so.
We have one question about the local option. If we need to vote on at a town meeting, is, or is that something the select board recommends, except?
I don't know.
Because if we have to vote on it at a town meeting, we probably should ask pretty quickly.
Well, I'm trying to remember, I think we need to vote on it at a town meeting, it's been so long, um. The problem is, it's been held up and getting to the select board.
I think we would have had to.
Because you did all the legwork, I don't know why I don't trust your information.
If we had to change the charter.
Somebody's dragging their feet and we, we would miss, miss down on a whole year's worth of income from something that may, that probably everybody in town would be, you know, would approve of.
The select board has public comment periods, that's maybe a, a good, good time to use that and say what you just said.
Yeah.
I am trying, I am trying to, yeah, I'm trying to, to get a path forged towards this, so um, like I said, we're just trying to verify um, to everyone's satisfaction that we are indeed eligible to vote on this without a charter change, and that's where we're at.
So may, maybe the to do here is, because I agree with what Roy just said, maybe if we don't have any uh, resolution to go in front of the select board by next meeting, maybe I'll just go to the public uh, comment period at the meeting following that.
Right, yeah, okay, agreed. So, um, okay, so that brings us to designation reapplication. This is more of a notice to you folks, but it turns out, and I noticed this the other day, um, when I was looking at wastewater stuff, that the Underhill Flats Village Center, um, is, well, it holds that designation via a program that the state um, manages, the Village Center designation. Um, it's a special legal status that they hold and planning commissions and select boards have to uh, put together an application in order to, you know, get a, a vill- a population center to assume that, that designation. Um, that was done a while back in a joint effort with Jericho, and now we are up for um, re, uh, re-designation um, in September twenty twenty-three.
Huh.
So we're going to have to.
Just the flats and all the center?
Just the flats. The center is good until I think twenty twenty-seven. So it's like a ten-year uh, does it, uh, period of designation and you have to just rewrite. So the, the designation, uh, I'll be looking a bit more into what we'll have to do and what our involvement will have to be with Jericho, but essentially we'll need to kind of come up, we'll have to do the little application which involves talking, describing any, you know, growth, projected changes. And then also it gives us the opportunity to rewrite the map. And so my basic proposal is I would like to rewrite the map to include the parcel that will event that has just been created by the new Jacobs subdivision. But I'd also like to rewrite it to include the parcels that are located, that have frontage on Men's Lane and Jacob's Hill Road and Harvest Run, which currently are not in, inside of the actual I think Harvest Run is, but not Jacob's Hill Road and Men's Lane. They are not part, considered part of the Underhill Center, Underhill Flats Village Center.
They are?
No.
No, it's just the.
They were.
Village designation, not the zoning district, right?
Not the zoning district, this is definitely, this is a state designation. It's important because what it does is it gives um, residents who own, like owners of property in there pre-approval to get a variety of tax rebates and whatnot, like um, I was about to drop another name from my past, not Larry Jacobs, Phil Jacobs. Um, it's actually, I believe, putting together an application under, through that program uh, to do some like uh, structural updates on the store. So, that's one of the functions of a Village Center designation, the other one um, is more for the town, so that the town can um, do some planning stuff, um, relax zoning laws if they, if they, and they choose to do so, and also um.
Probably gets priority in certain grants.
Get priority in certain grants, exactly, you are eligible for monies that would otherwise be um, unavailable, mostly from the state in defense. So, I'm going to put together this app, this application, when Brad and I are already working on it. Um, but I wanted to kind of just give you guys a heads up, that's going to be an upcoming project and we're going to have to wrap it up by September, yeah, September.
My question is, um, is why not include um, the area that is on the public water supply as
Oh.
the village?
That, I.
That goes way up the hill.
Yeah, John. No, but part of Poker Hill is, just the beginning part.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Why would someone not want to be in the Village Center? Like, why, why wouldn't we make it? I'm not, it's not a rhetorical question I'm, I'm asking, why wouldn't we make it there?
What defined it before when you guys were doing the zoning back then? What defined what the Village Center was?
Well, darn if I know. I mean, if we didn't get to stay lucky enough. Well, the downside might be, the downside might be, some of those properties way up the road, basically. Um, if we get around to deciding that the designated Village Center should have a zoning designation also, you know, that may be an obstacle in doing that.
I think the, I, yeah, you kind of touched on, I think, the, the biggest downside, which is that it does create an extra bureaucratic layer. So it could, you, you could be in one, a position where you're like, well, zoning wise, I'm all good to start this business or redevelop this property to have a childcare center, but, you know, but for the fact that it's not in a Village Center, that, you know, or something like that. Um, but my neighbor, it, it located across the road is in the Village Center, so, you know, she gets the tax breaks that I don't. So it can create this extra bureaucratic hurdle, but I don't really know of any direct drawbacks, I don't believe.
But that's a bureaucratic advantage that was listed. Is there, is there an actual, like, you could get grant money, is there a negative, like, there's an extra rule you have to.
I don't think there are any extra regulations.
That's just, that's just upside that you just listed.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I guess my. Yeah, I mean, I guess my example would be that it creates an extra thing that you've got to think about if you are a property developer or owner. Or in my position, you know, I have to sort of navigate like all that, but we're not talking about that many parcels of land. So I don't really think that it's, I think it matters more for a more built up place than.
Well, yeah, but if you include the water district, it does include more.
Okay.
Well, the advantage of including the water district is that that's often one of the hurdles for developing is that you don't have a good source of water. So if we already have that built into this. You know, why not use that as the part of the growth center? There's no more of that.
I think it would be able to be used, well, the water would be able to be used.
Yeah.
Even though it wasn't entirely encompassed for all the properties using it, we're entirely encompassed.
Tell you what, I will, I'll add to my little homework list and I will look into any potential drawbacks or burdens, let's call them burdens. Placed on, you know, designated village centers and then also look into what the. The standards for drawing one and limitations for drawing one would be, so.
Thank you.
And not touch upon the potential for rezoning.
Yeah, that can be considered separate and apart from it. There may be some requirements for. There may be some zoning requirements that haven't been met prior to this, but I'm relatively certain that we meet all, we would meet all of those by virtue of, you know, the, the village center district.
We may really want to at some date in the future have the village center designation, a separate zoning designation also.
We could.
You know, and that would simplify a fair number of things.
I kind of thought it was. I don't think, I thought it was.
Hmm, so.
No, I, I think the.
You have two designated, two designated village centers that have one and a half acres zoning.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I think the flat, Underhill Flat Zoning District is larger an area than the village designation.
Yeah.
I don't know why.
Yeah.
But it's only like, the village designation is this big and the zoning district is this big. I don't, I'm not sure why it was drawn that way.
I'm not sure.
I think the zoning district was created after the village center was designated.
No.
No?
The, the village center was very recent. The village designation was very recent.
This is tangentially related, but it's made me think of it, since you're touching base on ARPA. Because looking at these maps was one of our big things and it's all being held up by like ten grand in natural resources inventory that we asked the ARPA Committee for. Can you, in someone's ear, about making sure that's on their list since we did suggest it?
I submitted a.
I know you did separately too. Okay.
It seems like they are still accepting applications. So I just want clarity on like when will.
Okay.
Early first.
I know. And I think that's changed because I think originally it was November fourteenth was the application due deadline.
I mean, it's up to you.
No, I, I gotta talk with Jen anyway about this sidewalk stuff and whatnot.
It'd be very nice if that was on your.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna propose that we skip the bylaw update thing and just, or put our table up for next.
Oh, yeah, because it's a bit long. So what this is, is not going through line by line. Nick, this is like the one minute preview and then we can do it next meeting. Nick was gonna propose that we take a more holistic approach to the way we're going through the bylaws. You know, and I think this has come up before too, maybe last meeting, about making sure that we're accomplishing. The goals of the town plan in the bylaw review. And he had some specific proposals for how we might accomplish that, which is gonna take more than ten minutes to go through. So I, I would suggest we kick that next meeting unless anyone's opposed. Okay, so maybe we open next meeting with that, agenda item number one, so we don't miss it again because it's pretty important.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So we should get coffee to what that is.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and that's another thing. Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to, I've been neglecting doing this, but I'm going to start putting together meeting packets. With any documents that we're going to be reviewing ahead of time and try, I'm gonna shoot, send those around the Fridays before we, when we meet. So with, with agendas as well. I've been doing things a little bit. Last minute and I wanna, wanna get ahead of it, so, yeah.
Is there, is new business an agenda item?
Uh, we're, we're actually through the entire agenda now. Do you have something else? So.
Well, yeah, well, it's tangential to everything we've been discussing. So this ARPA Committee, I don't, I just looked at their meeting minutes. Would it make sense for me or one of us to go, to get invited or to suggest we be invited to one of their meetings to talk about the town plan and its goals? Because I was just looking through what they're receiving, what they're deciding upon and it'd be, I just wanna.
Do we have a summary of what we suggested to the Select Board?
Yeah, we sent the Select Board, well, let me figure this back. What we sent the Select Board was a memo. Discussing the results of the public survey that we took. What we haven't done explicitly. Is do what Val just suggested, which I feel like we should, like, it seems like the ARPA Committee should be aware of what the town plans is.
I wondered if they were.
Bring it up.
They should be getting almost everything they choose on.
I got so many questions back, which is fine, about our natural resources inventory request, like. Why are you asking for this? Isn't this something you should get town, state money for? You should try grant funding and like. There was no context for it, which I didn't know. I should have moved that into the application. Well, I did. I explained.
It was supposed to be brief, right?
It was always supposed to be brief, but it, that, you know, raised an orange flag for me.
I think we definitely should.
That probably don't know much about the town plan.
I'd be happy to go with you too, or if someone else wants to go, so you're not doing it on your own. I mean, I definitely think the planning commission should be advocating for them being familiar with the town plan.
I'd like to go if I could fit it in. Schedules are always an issue.
I also wonder if we should be submitting some proposals. I mean, we, we certainly have. Our thoughts about what, what priorities should be given, yet we haven't really submitted any proposals with. Okay, this is gonna cost about this much, that sort of thing.
That's a good idea. Could we, that, the, the study for the sidewalk study, could we submit a proposal to the ARPA?
We actually could. I mean, there's nothing stopping us from doing it. The only, that would give them their two options. The only, yeah, the, the issues with that would be, A, it wouldn't be improved in time to get us on RPC's worklist for this coming year. And B, it would, it wouldn't avoid the sort of potential conflict with the Rec Committee or Brad's plan, so, yeah.
Why don't we, what if, picking up on what Sandy said, just in the interest of time. What if we, whether it's Bell or me or you. Reach out to, is it Jen, to get on the agenda?
Yeah.
And say like, we, we'd like to catch up with you with respect to the town plan. And see how they would want that process to work. Is it that we submit five things that we think they should be looking at? Or is it that, that they want to use us as a resource and go through everything they already have and see how it fits with the town plan?
Well, we went through what we thought was. Good, were good suggestions for the ARPA fund.
Oh, I went to a meeting and talked.
When we went through that, didn't we go through that with an eye on what our town plan was?
We did, because we were done. And I sat down with them in early months ago now and said like, we think these, it wasn't just like, oh, this is what the survey, I sort of misrepresented. It wasn't like, oh, blah, this is just what the survey said. I said, this is what the survey results are, and this is what we think is important.
Yeah. Like you gave that to the Select Board.
No, ARPA Committee.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Yeah, but it was pretty, it was, I think what Val's saying we should do, it was very early in the process before they've had a bunch of other people advocate things to them. I don't know that they've read the town plan. There was no indication that they had in, in the meeting I was at. So, yeah, why would they? It's a hundred pages long.
Understand what are their guidelines.
Yep.
They should understand.
Forgetting, but any town that received less than ten million dollars to use ARPA funds for what, for any normal town business, like any business that had already been envisioned. But like some of the things that have been proposed, like a disc golf course, like that wasn't envisioned already. So, so I would be curious also to learn, like, what is, what is, what guidance has been given to them on what they can spend the funds on?
So just to give you a, this is, this is the, the, the application form for the, and we're looking at Anton's sidewalk application.
So does it align with the priorities of the town plan?
Yeah, so we do have, that, that is available for people to consider via this link and it's also asked of the, you know, applicants that they, that they consider that.
It still seems worth our while if we want to advocate for all this work we've put into the town plan, which we're supposed to be following as a town, to get on their agenda.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Well, I'm inclined to think that, you know, if we locate or identify what we really think is important to get done. You can find the justification in the town plan.
Yeah.
Rather than going to the town plan and all the different details of it, you know, and, and try and work from that. I think it's just too big a thing. We really should look at what really we want to do in the town and then say, well, town plan allows for this and it's funded by.
That's kind of what they're doing. Right now it looks like.
Yeah, good.
Well, they're always asking you to check a box whether it complies with the.
Their lips are, I'm not sure they're actually.
Yeah, I mean, to their credit, a number of people have just checked, have no on that box in their plans and I wouldn't disagree with their applications either. It's well represented. They aren't in line with the town plan. For instance, the one asking us to buy some private property. But, yeah, I, I think Jen would be very happy to make time and space for the PC to, to talk to, or RPC members to talk to. The ARPA Committee members about our views on the whole process.
Do you want to coordinate with Jen?
I'd be happy to, yeah. We're already talking about sidewalks and all this, so yeah. Yeah.
Along with.
Always do, yeah, and that's okay. So. Yeah. And then I will have a more written out thing to talk about bylaws and how we.
So what I've got just real quick is CCRPC to come talk about wastewater. Time with the Select Board on rural development. You're touching base with Brad and ARPA and sidewalks and sending around whatever comes out of that. We're gonna do a local option tax update next meeting. We're gonna circle back on the flats, village center, and you're talking to Jen about ARPA Committee. Okay.
One thought, should I reach out and back channel to Anton and tell him our concerns about the sidewalk and see if we can come to any middle ground or should?
I feel like that's totally up to you based on your relationship.
I would.
Yeah, then it's not behind his back.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm not like buddy buddy with him, but.
I know.
When I'm calling him, I'm putting my phone, yeah. I'm, I'm happy to, because I feel like I understand the issue pretty well and I can explain it clearly.
And it directly impacts you.
I, I can, even before he switched their plan to following Brad's, I sent him an email explaining what he should do.
Yeah.
Cool. Then he went with Brad's idea, so maybe I'll just talk to him and see what he was thinking and see if I can convince him to switch sides.
Right.
Yeah, go for it. Oh, and the only other thing is I'm gonna shoot around to everyone and revise town report with the paragraph on what we were. Anything else?
So who, whose role is it to, to see the town plans conformed with in general?
The Select Board, yes, right.
That theoretically could be a basis for appeal in certain situations to the court. Unlikely, but it's possible.
I'd love to know about how that's.
David has a story about one in Underhill, I think, right?
Well.
The non-conformists. I think I found some information on that when I was the zoning administrator. I can't remember the town list or the name list.
On the settlement road, the cousin construction situation.
Oh, yeah.
It appealed it and it was overturned because it wasn't in conformance of the town plan.
Even more than building, though, it feels like if you showed up at a town meeting and said like, why are we building a disc golf course? Like, your town plan doesn't talk about it at all.
Probably not the ideal situation for the Select Board to be in.
Yeah, or you could challenge zoning regulations, the regs are, don't comply with the town plan.
I don't see a disc golf use, so I don't see anything that says we have to permit a disc golf course.
Is that one of the requests?
But it would be very funny if this golf course was, was up there with like bed and breakfast and single family home. Specific use. I think they only do that in Berkeley. Yeah.
Anything else or are we up for a motion to? Anyone have a motion to?
What was our plan with circling back to the Select Board on the sidewalk? Because we had to, if we were gonna do an application, it had to be right after the next meeting.
I think he's gonna talk to Brad.
I think he's gonna circulate an email.
Yeah, yeah.
Good recap.
Oh, and an official good luck to Roy before we adjourn.
Yeah.
I'm sure he will.
I hope so.
If you brought it in. Well, in that case, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Wait a second. Val, Tom favor? Good luck, Roy. Thank you, everyone.